Councilor, please. The motion is in order. Lonnie, will you deliver the indication, please?
Lord, as we gather together, conduct the business of the City of Jasper, we just ask you for guidance, direction, and well-being for this town. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to gather together and meet and conduct this. Amen.
Amen.
And, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and a republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and never can be judged as wrong.
The council has a copy of the agenda. What is their motion?
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being on our favor, both show hands. Thank you, council. Lisa, the minutes of January 7, 2019, and I believe you have two also before the painting, 2019.
A regular council meeting Monday, January 7, 2019. Mayor Weaver called a meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Councilmember John Fousk leave the occasion. He requested Councilmember Ann Snady lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Sonny Proctor asked if the review and approval of annual appointments be removed since council has not provided a list of the appointments in advance. Mayor Weaver stated that he would provide the council with the appointments later in the meeting. Council lady unanimously took through the agenda. City Clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of the December 3 regular meeting. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to adopt the minutes as read with a correction to the number of items. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously, with the exception of Tony Fountain, who was absent from the December 3 meeting. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the December 10, 2019 call meeting. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the December 13, 2019 call meeting. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the December 20, 2019 call meeting. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under Organization Meeting. This item was addressed later in the meeting. Item B, under Organization Meeting. Mayor Weaver recommended Councilmember Sonny Proctor to explain his issue with the appointments. Councilmember Proctor stated that engaging the public in appointments was one of the most important things that the council did. He stated that councils should have prior knowledge of who the appointees are, their duties of education, and they should be evaluated by council. Mayor Weaver stated that he would make the presentation this evening, and council could either report the appointees or against. Councilmember Proctor stated that any appointments made should be supported by council. Mayor Weaver stated that he was going to ask for support this evening, and that as soon as you get to be mayor, you get to make these decisions. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that the mayor had the right to make the appointments. Mayor Weaver presented his appointments for 2019 for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor Weaver recommended that Luke Copeland be reappointed for a three-year term. Councilmember Tony Fountain made the motion to accept the reappointment. Motion failed for lack of a second. Mayor Weaver stated, "You guys, council, are pretty incredible." Mayor Weaver also stated that it's pretty obvious to the public that there is a show going on for politics, and show shall it be, this is the chaos that prevails. Mayor Weaver recommended that Karen Proctor be reappointed for a three-year term to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to accept the reappointment. Motion failed for lack of a second. Mayor Weaver recommended that Don Foggus be reappointed for a five-year term to serve on the Jasper Housing Authority. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to accept the reappointment. Motion failed for lack of a second. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that the persons not reappointed was served until such time that an appointment is made. Mayor Weaver asked Councilmember Proctor if there was any more chaos. Councilmember Proctor stated that he was trying to prevent the chaos, and the council deserves input as to who serves on these committees. Mayor Weaver stated to Councilmember Proctor that he had more input than he could imagine, so congratulations. Mayor Weaver read the following recommendations for the council committees. Finance Committee, Tony Fountain, John Fousk. Water Committee, Tony Fountain. Public Safety, Sonny Proctor. Streets, Ann Snady. Parks, John Fousk and Ann Snady. JYSA Liaison, John Fousk. Railroad Rovers, Pool Properties, Jim Looney, Sonny Proctor. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to accept the mayor's recommendations for the council committees. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Under Public Comments, City Manager Finalist, there were no public comments made or to report. Item A, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Attorney Bill Pickett to give an update on sewer line easements on Burton Street. Mr. Pickett stated that he had met with the housing authority, and the deeds have been executed. He stated that the deeds are at the courthouse waiting to be recorded. Mayor Weaver stated that this item would remain on Old Business for next month's meeting after the deeds are recorded for the purpose of council's approval to accept the easement. Item B, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver asked for an update on closing of Main Street from council members Kirk Ratfield and Tony Fountain. Councilmember Ratfield stated that he had no update. Councilmember Fountain stated that he had no update, would do his best to meet with the car club before the next regular council meeting. Items C and D, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Looney to present an update on John Lane rezoning, which was approved at the last regular council meeting, contingent upon approval from the Appalachian Regional Commission. Mr. Looney stated, "At the December 3, 2019 council meeting, he was asked to research the restrictive use of John Lane, which was served by the water tank and sewer project paid for in part by Appalachian Regional Commission grant money." Mr. Looney read from a letter from USDA that stated, "They do not find any restrictions that would prohibit the city from rezoning portions of the property to R3 high-density multifamily residential." Mayor Weaver then recognized Brian Dilbeck and David Schaus, who were present at the council meeting to express concerns about the change in zoning. Mr. Dilbeck stated that he was not notified of the planning commission public hearing or the council meeting whereby the decisions to change the zoning took place. He and Mr. Schaus made presentations to council, recognized several of their tenants who expressed concerns as well. Some of the concerns expressed were safety of people living in apartments, noise complaints because of the proximity to the industrial park, traffic on the narrow road, as well as increases to liability insurance of the manufacturers. Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Looney to address council as to what needs to be done. Mr. Looney called on Mr. Pickett, who stated that, in his opinion, the only way to overturn the rezoning was to start over with the process of notifications and another public hearing. Mayor Weaver asked if there was anyone present in opposition of what was presented tonight. There was no response. Mayor Weaver stated that, at the last regular council meeting, he told Mr. McGough not to move forward with the development until the administration gave him the go-ahead. Mayor Weaver stated that the city owns property on that street as well, and the council's decision also affected the value of that property, which is owned by the taxpayers. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Pickett what he suggested be done, and Mr. Pickett stated that he would advise that council table any decision at this time. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to table this item. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to table the final rezoning of the properties on John Lane. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver called on Attorney Bill Pickett to present for council review the proposed light ordinance for the second reading. Mr. Pickett stated that, in his opinion, the ordinance is ready to be approved as the second reading. Mr. Looney asked to be recognized and stated that it appeared that what he placed in the council's book was not consistent, and he would like to ask council to table this approval until the next regular meeting. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made a motion to table the second reading. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney giving an update on the city's purchase of property located at 125 North Main Street, the old and tattered paint building. Attorney Bill Pickett asked that council go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the future acquisition of real estate. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to go into executive session. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Mayor Weaver stated that there was no action taken during executive session. Item G, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver called on David Hall to give council an update on the newly installed well pump, Avenue Number Three at the code. Mr. Hall stated that the pumps have been installed by Byers Well Drilling at the Boast Street Mall. Item A, under Old Business, which was skipped earlier in the meeting. Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney, who asked that council hold a call meeting on January 14, 2018 -- that should be 2019 -- at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of finalizing a contract with the new city manager. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made such motion. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney and Cheryl Evans. Ms. Evans stated that she is a member of a pickleball association, would like for the city to add markings on parks, tents, courts for pickleball. She stated that there is a grant available for $800 to be used for this purpose. She presented to council how the court would look. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to add the markings to the city's tents, courts for pickleball. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Planning and Zoning Director Sonny Edward Wood to present a request from the owner of I Love Neut pizza to purchase a license to sell the still spirits by the drink. Mr. Edward Wood stated that the owner already had a license to sell beer in mind of the drink, and had done all the requirements, background checks, et cetera, that are required to sell alcohol. Bill Pickett stated that he saw no reason that would prevent council from allowing him to purchase a still spirits license. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to allow the owner of I Love Neut pizza to purchase a still spirits license. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Edward Wood to present a request from the new owners of Woodbridge Inn Restaurant to use the previous owner's alcohol license until the city approved the license in their name. He stated this would allow them to continue selling alcohol during the application process. Discussion followed. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that it was legal for the city to allow this, so long as the license is not transferred, which is not legal to do. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made a motion to allow the new owners to continue to use the previous owner's license during the application process until such time they obtain their own license. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney and Ben Trailblow Trailblows to present to council video and discussion of the stormwater drainage problems located at Speedburger on Highway 53. Mr. Trailblow stated that he insisted on probing a camera through the entire system. He stated that this is the worst system he's worked on in his 56 years. Mr. Trailblow stated that the whole system needs to be repaired, with the exception of the two catch basins across Highway 53, but the tops of those are also need to be replaced, which will be a state issue. He presented council with video of the system. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for Mr. Trailblow to bring a quote to prepare documents in order to bid out the repair. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield made such motion. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized David Hall to present to council two quotes to replace the water line located on Highway 1A. He stated the line was washed away during the latest rains. He stated that he would like to replace the line in case due to the flooding in that area. He presented council with two quotes. Corn main quoted 10,175-80, and Ford line quoted 9,963-92. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to accept the low quote of 9,963-92. Councilmember John Fousk seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item F, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hall to ask council approval for leak detection. He stated that the same company the city used in the prior year, Matchpoint, had done a great job in that he is asking for council's approval to hire them to do leak detection for 2019. He stated that $25,000 is in the budget. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to approve Matchpoint to perform our leak detection services. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hall to present to council quotes on the purchase of a sewer pump located on Union Forest Road, which is included in the 2019 budget. Mr. Hall stated that he had received two quotes. James Electric at 14,875, and North Georgia Electric at 15,070. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to accept the low quote from James Electric for 14,875. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hall to present to council a quote for a sludge pump for the water pollution control plant. He stated that he was only able to give the one quote, Xylem Water Solutions, for 4,898-32. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to accept the quote of 4,898-32 from Xylem Water Solutions. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Wall gave the financial report for the month of December 2018. Lonnie Waters gave a report of roads and streets. Chief Greg Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of December 2018. Chief Steve Repl gave a report of the fire activities for the month of December 2018. Councilmember John Fousk gave a report of JYSA. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion during the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the call meeting to be held January 14, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Will the change that Lisa had for 2019?
Motion to approve the minutes. As read, will the date change?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being on our favor, both show hands. Thank you.
This should stay at the top of this. This should say Call Counseling instead of Regular Counseling. I'll make that change. Monday, January 14, 2019. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Jim Looney give the indication. He requested Councilmember John Fousk lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under Old Business. Mayor Weaver recognized Interstate Manager Jim Looney to discuss the new city manager contract. Mr. Looney stated that the 14-day comment period has been completed, and the council should approve the contract at this time. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to approve Brandon D. Douglas' be approved as the Jasper city manager and authorize the institution of this contract for the duties of the Jasper city manager. Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated to note that Councilmember Tony Fountain was not in attendance, so we have a core of four this evening. The city manager contract was signed by Mr. Douglas, Mayor Weaver, Bill Pickett, and attested by the city clerk. A copy of the contract will be made a part of these minutes as referenced. Item A, under New Business. Mayor Weaver recognized City Clerk Lisa Hall to discuss election qualifying fees. Ms. Hall stated that the 2019 election qualifying fees must be set this month, and the amount could be anything up to the maximum of $35. Councilmember John Fousk made a motion to set the 2019 qualifying fee at $35, and Councilmember Kirk Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the special call. That should say, regular meeting. Regular meeting to be held February 4, 2019.
Entertained a motion?
The motion will accept the minutes as read with the two exceptions, corrections.
Motion to approve with the two changes indicated. Got a motion, second, discussion. Being on our favor, both show hands. Thank you, council. Thank you, Lisa. Under Old Business. Item A, Sewer Line Easements on Burton Street.
I forgot to bring that with me tonight, but it's already been recorded, and it's already all done.
So, entertained a motion to approve the attorney's efforts of registering the easement at the courthouse?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Colonel?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
Sue.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. Being on our favor, both show hands. unanimous. Thank you, council. Update on North Main Street closing for car clubs. Tony, Kirk?
Since last month, I got in touch with one of the members of the car club. He was going to get in touch with some more members. Called me back. He said he got in touch with two or three of them. He said he could not get any response out of them. He does not know if it was lack of interest, or if it was because Car Show season was so far out. So, with the unfortunate time Carlos's restaurant being closed, I don't know what the rest of the council's wishes are with the issue, but nobody else has a complaint with the streets being closed down. My suggestion would be to stay with the status quo until somebody else had a problem with the street being closed.
Kirk, do you have any input?
No, sir. I don't have an update. Since the first update, I had business owners. I talked to numerous businesses along Main Street, and the report I had was, from the majority of them, that it wasn't a positive impact on their business.
Most of them?
It was, or was not?
It was not a positive impact.
What time do they show up?
I don't know.
Five. Five o'clock. Most of the businesses, except Carlos's, closed at Cyber Club.
And that was the issue we had. It was Carlos's business. Carlos worked very, very hard in his business. He probably worked harder at his craft in the town than you. And that was the one thing we were trying to work out, was to help Carlos out, trying to help the car club members out. I had even thought about maybe closing the south end of town and letting them have the south end of town. I thought that out there to the gentleman I spoke with. He just said that he spoke to three or four, and he said he couldn't get an answer. He said, "I couldn't even get a response out of them." He said, "I don't know why." So...
Who did you speak with?
Troy Pet.
Okay.
Spoke with him a couple of hours.
When's the first car show?
Once again, that's probably the first weekend of May.
April, May, or May-ish somewhere.
Yeah. Run it all the way.
We're still looking a couple of months. Well, did it say a motion from the council?
And once again, that's just my recommendation. I mean, that we, like I say, the unfortunate time Carlos's restaurant closed, and if anybody else has a problem with the street being closed during the car show, I would make the recommendation that we stay with the status quo.
Okay. Make a motion.
I'd make a motion that, instead of closing the street down for the car show, or instead of opening the streets up for the car show, that until we have anybody, any other complaints, that we leave the streets closed for the car show.
Got a motion? Got a second. Motion's second, discussion. Being on our favor, both show hands. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tony Kirk. Light order of the second reading, Mr. Pickett?
I made that one change, change that Mr. Fousk wanted me to change, to add any other appropriate clause to that paragraph.
We have a cannon cry. You mean you, John? Do you like to read the, do you like to read your ordinance?
We put it out there.
It's a reading. The second reading?
You want me to read it? Being derelict and blighted property ordinance, an ordinance by the mayor and the city council for the City of Jasper related to derelict and blighted property, to provide for definitions, to provide for procedures for a declaration of public nuisance, to provide for a complaint and an appeal process, provide powers, city officers, to provide for a search of process, provide for a limitation of liability, provide for a levy of increase on abhorrent taxes for blighted property, to provide for identification of blighted property, to provide for remediation, to provide for a decrease on abhorrent taxes on property, to provide for procedures, to provide for enforcement, to provide for violations, to provide penalties, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, and to repeal any and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with it. Section 1 will be numbered by our municipal code publisher. They will have numbers there. Section under definitions, used in this article, the term applicable codes means any optional housing or abatement standard provided in OCGA Title 8, Chapter 2, as adopted by ordinance or operation of law, and other property maintenance standards as adopted by the ordinance or operation of law or general nuisance law relative to the safe use of real property, any fire or life safety code that's provided by OCGA Section 25-2, and for any building codes adapted by local ordinance prior to October 1, 1991, or to provide for minimum standard codes provided for in OCGA Section Title 8, Chapter 2, after October 1, 1991, to provide for such housing or minimum standard codes for real property improvements shall be deemed to mean those buildings or minimum standard codes in existence at the time such real property improvements were constructed unless otherwise provided by law. B, closing means causing a dwelling, building, or other structure to be vacant and secure against unauthorized entry. Section C, drug crime, means an act in violation of OCGA Section Title 16-13-2, known as the Georgia Controlled Substance Act. Part D, dwellings, buildings, or structures means any building or structure or part thereof used or occupied by human habitation or commercial, industrial, or business uses or intended to be used, including any outhouses or improvements or purchases belonging thereto or usual joint therewith, and also including any building or structure of any design as used in this article. The term dwellings, buildings, or structures shall not mean or include any farm or any buildings or structures located on a farm, or any agricultural facility, or other buildings or structures of production or growing, raising, or harvesting, storage, or processing of crops, livestock, poultry, and other farm products. The graffiti means any inscription, words, figures, painting, or other defaces that are written, marked, etched, scratched, sprayed, drawn, painted, or engraved or otherwise depicts to any surface of public or private property by means of any aerosol, paint can, paint container, broad strip marker, gun label, paint stick, graffiti stick, etching equipment, brush, or other device capable of scarring or leaving a visible mark on any surface without written, prior written, without prior authorization from the owner or occupied of the property. Government authority means the city council, the City of Jasper, Georgia. Interested parties means the owner, persons in possession of the property or premises. Those parties having an interest in the property as revealed by a certificate of title to the property, conducted in accordance with the title standards of the State Bar of Georgia. Those parties having filed a notice in court with OCGA Section 48-3-9, and any other party having an interest in property whose identity and addresses are reasonably ascertainable from the records of the municipality, or any records maintained in the county courthouse or by the clerk in court. Provided, however, interest parties shall not include the owner of any benefit or burden of any easement or right-of-way which interest is properly recorded, which interests shall remain unaffected. Municipal means the City of Jasper, Georgia. Owner means the owner of the title, which is simple, and every mortgage. Public authority means any member or governor and authority, any director of a public housing authority, or any officer who is in charge of any department or branch of government, municipal, county, or state relative to health, fire, safety, building requirements, or any other activities concerning dwellings, buildings, or structures, or use of private property within the city. Public officer means the city manager, which authorizes to exercise powers described in this by article, or any officer or employee of the city to whom he delegated such authority. Repair means altering or improving a dwelling, building, or structure so as to bring the structure into compliance with the applicable codes in the jurisdiction where the property is located, and the cleaning or removal of debris, trash, or other material present and accumulation which creates a health or safety hazard, or in any way a dwelling, building, or other structure. Residents means any person residing in the jurisdiction where the property is located on or after the date on which the alleged nuisance arose. Duty of owners of real property and structures. It will be the duty of the It'll be the duty and the honor of every dwelling, building, structure, or private property within the jurisdiction to construct and maintain such dwelling, building, structure, or property in compliance with the applicable codes enforced within the city and such laws and ordinances which regulate and prohibit activities on private property and which declare it to be a public nuisance to construct or maintain a dwelling, building, structure, or other private property in violation of such codes, laws, or ordinances. Declaration of public nuisance. Every dwelling, building, structure within the city which is constructed or maintained in violation of applicable codes enforced within the city is unfit for human habitation or commercial, industrial, or business use or occupancy due to inadequate provisions for ventilation, light, air sanitation, and other spaces poses an imminent harm, life, or other property due to fire, flood, hurricane, tornado, earthquake, storm, or other natural catastrophe. Is vacant and used in the commission of drug crimes, is occupied and used repeatedly for the commission of illegal activity, including facilitating organized crime or criminal enterprise after which, after written notice to the owner of such activities conducted therein, is abandoned or otherwise constitute an endangerment to the public health as to the safety of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. It is declared a public nuisance. Every property, private property within the city on which is being regularly conducted any activity or land use in violation of applicable laws and ordinances, including the zoning ordinance of this city, and hereby declared to be a public nuisance. Property which may be deemed aesthetically standard or deteriorating shall not meet the definition of a public nuisance unless the overall condition of the use of property results in impairment of health, safety, transmission of disease, infant mortality, or crime. Powers of the city manager is his destiny. In carrying out this, and carrying out these duties pursuant to this article, the city manager or his destiny, to which his authority is assigned, shall, in addition to those powers otherwise confirmed, conferred upon, or delegated to him by the charter and other ordinance of the city being powered to, investigate, inspect the conditions of dwellings, buildings, structures, and private property within the city to determine those structures and property use in violation of this article. Entries onto private property shall be made in a manner so as to cause the least possible inconvenience provided, however. Public officer shall not enter into any occupied dwelling or structure without first having obtained consent of the owner or person in possession. In those cases where consent entry is denied after reasonable request, the public officer may apply to the municipal court for a administrative search warrant and show in probable cause that a violation exists. To retain experts, including certified real estate appraisers, qualified building contractors, qualified building inspectors, engineers, surveyors, accountants, and attorneys, to appoint and fix the duties of such officers and employees of the city as he deems necessary to carry out purposes of this article. Delegate any of these functions or powers under the article to such officers, employees, or agents as he may designate. In additions to the procedures set forth in this article, the city manager or his designated may issue citations for violation of state minimum standard codes, optional, optional building, fire, life, safety, or other codes adopted by ordinance, and conditions declared to constitute a public health or safety hazard or general nuisance, and seek enforcement of such citation before the municipal court or other appropriate court prior to issuance of a complaint interim as provided in this article. Nothing in this article shall be construed to impair or limit in any way the power of the city to find, declare nuisances, and to cause their removal by abatement or other summary proceedings. Complaint interim in municipal court procedure lien in appeal. Whenever requests is filled out by the public officer or by the public authority, albeit they're leased by residents of the municipality. Charging that any dwelling, structure, building, property, and property in a unfit or human habitation are for commercial, industrial, or business uses, and not in compliance with applicable courts as vacant and being used in the commission of drug crimes constitute the endangerment of the public health or safety as a result of unsanitary and unsafe conditions. Public officer may make an investigation or inspection of the specific dwelling, structure, property, or make a written report of his findings. Such officer shall be guided in his investigation by documenting conditions that include, that are not limited to defects in which increasing the hazards of fire, accidents, or other calamities lack the adequate ventilation, light, or sanitary facilities, dilapidation, disrepare by figures conformed to the applicable codes and ordinances, structure defects in which the structure unsafe for human habitation or occupancy, uncleaned in this, or if the public officer investigates, if the public officer's investigation or inspection identifies that any dwelling, building, structure, or property is unfit for human habitation, or for commercial, industrial, or business use, and not in compliance with the applicable courts, codes, or vacant, and being used in connection with the commission of drug crimes or constitute the endangerment of public health or safety as a result of unsanitary and unsafe conditions. The public officer shall file a complaint interim in the municipal court of the city or other appropriate court against a lot, tract, or parcel of property with which such dwelling is situated, and where such public health hazard or general nuisance exists, shall cause summons and a copy of the complaint to be served on the interested parties in such dwelling, building, or structure. Complaint shall identify the subject real property by appropriate street address, official tax map, tax map reference. Identify the interested parties, state particularly the factual basis for the action, and contain a statement of the action sought by the public officer to abate the alleged nuisance. Summon shall notify the interested parties that a hearing will be held in the municipal court or other appropriate court at a date, a time certain, and at a place within the county or municipality where the property is located. Such hearing shall be held not less than fifteen days or more than forty-five days after filing such complaint. Such hearing shall be held, such hearing shall be held not less than fifteen days or more than forty-five days after filing complaint in proper court. The interested parties shall have the right to file an answer to the complaint and appear in person or by attorney and offer testimony at the time and place fixed for a hearing. If after such notice hearing, the court determines that the dwelling, building, or structure in question is unfit for human habitation or is unfit for its current commercial, industrial, or business use, and not in compliance with applicable courts, codes, is vacant or is being used in connection with commission of drug crimes or constitutes an endangerment to public health or safety as a result of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. The court shall state in writing findings and facts in support of such determination, and shall issue a call to be served upon the interested parties that have answered the complaint or appear at a hearing and order. If the repair, alteration, improvement of said dwelling, building, or structure can be made at a reasonable cost in relationship to the present value of the dwelling, building, or structure, requiring the owner within the time specified by the order to repair, alter, or improve such dwelling, building, or structure so as to bring it into full compliance with the applicable codes relevant to the cited violation. And applicable to secure by closing the structure so that it cannot be used in connection with the commission of drug crimes, or if repair, alteration, or improvement of the dwelling, building, or structure in order to bring it into full compliance with the applicable codes relative to the cited violations cannot be made at a reasonable cost in relationship to the present value, value of the dwelling, building, or structure, requiring the owner within the time specified in the order to demolish, remove such dwelling, building, or other structure and all debris from the property. For this, for the purposes of this section, the court shall make its determination of reasonable cost in relationship to the present value of the dwelling, building, or structure without consideration of the value of the land on which the structure is situated. Provided however, that costs of preparation necessary to repair, alter, improve the structure may be considered, and provide further that if the unsanitary condition is limited solely to the presence, to the presence of graffiti, dwelling, building, or structure shall not be ordered demolished or closed, but its owner may be ordered to repair the same by cleaning and removing the graffiti. Income and financial status of the owner shall not be a factor in the court's determination. The present value of the structure or cost of repair, alteration, or improvement may be established by affidavits of real estate appraisers with a Georgia appraisers classification as provided for in OCGA Section Title thirty-three, Chapter thirty-nine A, qualified building contractor, qualified building inspector, without actual testimony presented. Cost of repair, alteration, or improvements of the structure shall be at the cost necessary to bring the structure into compliance with the applicable codes relevant to the cited, cited violation in order enforced in this jurisdiction. If the owner fails to comply with the order to repair, demolish the buildings, the dwelling, building, or structure, public officer shall cause such dwelling, building, or structure to be repaired, altered, or approved, or to be vacated and closed or demolished within two hundred and seventy days of the expiration time specified in the order. By abatement of the order at any time during which such action is prohibited by court order issued pursuant to subsection C of this section. Any time during which such action is prohibited by court order issued pursuant to subsection C of this section, or any equitable relief granted by a court of competent jurisdiction shall not be counted towards the two hundred and seventy days in which the abatement action shall commence. Public officer shall cause to be posted on the main entrance of the building, dwelling, structure, or place card with the following words. This building is unfit for human habitation or commercial, industrial, or business use, and does not comply with the applicable codes for which it has been ordered to secure to prevent its use in connection with drug crimes or constitute an endangerment to public health or safety as a result of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. The use or occupation of this building is prohibited and unlawful. If the public officer has a structure demolished, reasonable efforts shall be made to salvage, reuse materials or credit against the cost of demolition. The proceeds of any money received for the sale of salvaged materials shall be used or applied against the cost of the demolition and removal of the structure, and proper records shall be kept showing the applicable, the application, excuse me, application of sale prohibited. Any such sale of salvaged material may be made without the necessity of public advertising or bidding. The public officer and the governor and authority are relieved from any liability resulting from the occasion by the sale of any such salvaged material, including without limitation defects for such salvaged materials. The amount of the cost of demolition, demolition, including all court costs, appraisal fees, administrative costs incurred by the tax commissioner, or other costs necessary associated with the abatement action, including restoration to grade of real property after demolition, shall be a lien against the real property on which it shall be incurred. The lien provided for in subsection E of this section shall attach to the real property and should be filed, a certified copy of the order requiring repair, closure, or demolition in the office of the clerk of the superior court in Figueroa County, and shall relate back to the date of filing of the less pending notice required in subsection A. The clerk of the superior court shall record and index such certified copy of the order in the deed records of the county and enter the lien on the general execution dock. The lien shall be superior to all other liens on property except liens for taxes to which the lien shall be inferior and shall continue in force until paid. After the filing of a certified copy of the order with the clerk of the superior court, the public officer, within ninety days of the completion of repairs, demolition, or closure, files a copy of the order and a final statement to the cause to the county tax commissioner. It shall be the duty of the county tax commissioner to collect the amount of lien in connection with the collection of abdolment taxes on the property, and to collect the amount of lien as if it were real property, abdolment tax, using the methods available for collection of real property and abdolment tax, including specifically OCGA Section forty-eight dash four, dash five, provided however, that the limitations of OCGA Section forty-eight, four, dash seventy-eight, or which twelve months of delinquency before the commission of a tax or closure shall modify, provided further that the redemption of property upon the lien may be made the lien may be made according to the provisions of OCGA Section forty-eight dash four dash eighty dash forty-eight dash four dash eighty-one. The tax commissioner may initiate enforcement of the liens imposed under this section at any time following the receipt of the final determination of the cost for the public officer. The unpaid lien amount shall bear interest and penalties from and after the date of final determination of the cost in the same amount as applicable to interest and penalties on unpaid real estate ad lour taxes. Tax commissioner shall remit said amount collected to the governing authority of the municipality whose ordinance is being enforced. The tax commissioner may retain an amount equal to the cost of administering the collection of lien. Any such amount collected and retained for administration shall be deposited in the general fund of the county and paid to the cost of administrative lien. Governing authority may waive and release any such lien imposed on the property upon the owner of such lien imposed on the property, upon the owner of such property entered into a contract with the municipality, agreeing to a timetable for rehabilitation of the real property, or the dwelling, building, or structure on the property, and demonstrating the financial means to accomplish such rehabilitation. Review of the court order requiring the repair, alteration, improvements, and demolition of dwelling, building, or structure shall be by direct appeal to the superior court under OCGA Section five dash three dash twenty-nine. Service of the complaint, summons and copies of the complaint shall be served in the following manner: In all cases, the copy of the complaint, summons, shall be strictly posted on the subject dwelling, building, structure, or property within three business days of filing the complaint, and at least fourteen days prior to the date of the hearing. At least fourteen days prior to the date of the hearing, the public officer shall mail copies of the complaint and summons by certified mail statutory overnight delivery, return received requested to all interested parties whose identities and addresses are readily accessible. Copies of the complaint and summons shall also be mailed by first-class mail to the property address and to the attention of the occupants if any. For interested parties who mail the address is unknown, notice stating the date, time, and place of the hearing shall be published in a newspaper in which the shares' advertisements appear in such county once a week, two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing. And a notice of the less pending shall be filed in the office of the clerk of superior court in which the dwelling, building, structure, or property is located at the time of filing the complaint in municipal court. The public officer shall cause an affidavit of service to be filed of record in the municipal court prior to the hearing, showing compliance with the service requirements of this section. Such affidavits shall constitute promulgation showing that the minimum procedure due process and shall constitute sufficient proof that service was perfected. Orders and other filings made subsequent to the service of the initial complaint shall be served in the manner provided in this section upon every interested party who answers the complaint and appears at the hearing. Any interested party who fails to answer or appear at the hearing shall be deemed to have waived all further notice in the proceedings. Limitation of liability for public officers is in intent of this article to protect the public health, life, safety, and general welfare of properties and occupiers of buildings and structures within the city in general, but it is not creating any special duty or relationship with any individual person or any specific property within or without the boundaries of the city. Approval of a permit and inspection of property shall in no manner guarantee or warrant to the owner or occupants thereof that any property has been constructed, maintained, or operated in accordance with the applicable codes, laws, and regulations. The city reserves the right to assert all available amenities and defenses in any action seeking to impose monetary damages upon the city, its officers, employees, or agents arising from any alleged failure, failure, or breach of duty or relationship as may now exist or hereafter be created, to the extent that any federal or state law, regulation, or ordinance requires compliance as a condition preceded to the issuance of a permit, plan, and design. Approval or other activity by the city, its officers, employees, agents, issued such permits, approval of inspection, shall not be deemed to constitute a waiver or a stop of the conditions preceded, and it shall remain the obligation, shall remain the obligation or responsibility of the owner, his designated professional or contractor to satisfy those legal requirements. General plenariness of premises. The owner and occupant of the property within the city shall be independently responsible for keeping the premises, including buildings thereon and pool yard thereof, clean and free from all garbage, refuse, filth, dirt, ashes, trash, rubbish, or other offensive materials disorderly house. Any person who keeps and maintains either by himself or others a common ill-governed or disorderly house to encourage the gaming, to encourage gaming, drinking, illegal drug activity, or other misbehavior to the common disturbance of the neighborhood or orderly citizens, shall be guilty of offense against the city, provided however that such person is charged there under this subsection. Written notice shall be given to the owner of the property and the person in possession thereof by the chief police or designated persons stating the general and customary common habits of the house, giving fair notice of this subsection and the conduct prescribed thereby. Any person who shall allow any business, noise, drunken, or riotous persons to assemble or remain in their house, apartment, or other property after receiving oral notice from a police officer that boisterous, noisy, drunken, and arousing activities have caused complaint and nonsense to the common disturbance of the neighborhood or orderly citizens, shall be guilty of offense against the city, provided how that no person in possession of the premises has been afforded the opportunity to disturb the assembling or offending person from the premises. Those subsections shall not preclude that the police officer from arresting any individual for criminal trespass where such individual, known without the authority, remains on private property after being notified by the owner or lawful occupant to depart. Violations: Any person who willfully refuses to comply with provisions of this article shall be cited to appear before the municipal court, and upon conviction shall be fined not less than a hundred dollars each day of continuing violations after the citation shall constitute a separate offense. In addition to the four thousand fines upon conviction of the director, shall discontinue the public water supply service at any premises upon which there is found to be a cross-connection, auxiliary intake, bypass, or interconnection, and the service shall not be restored until such cross-connection, auxiliary, bypass, or interconnection has been discontinued. Section two, be known as the City of Jasper blighted ordinance. The existence of the real property for which is maintained in a blighted condition increases the burden of the state and the local government by increasing the need of government services, including but not limited to social services, public safety services, code enforcement services. Rehabilitation of blighted property decreases this need for such government services. In accordance of this objection to eradicate conditions of slum and blight within the city, this city counts on exercising the power granted to the municipal corporation at Chapter sixty-one, Urban Redevelopment, Title thirty-six of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, as designated those areas of the city whose conditions of slum and blight are likely to spread. Recognition of this need for the enhanced government services in order to encourage private property owners to maintain their real property and building structures and improvements thereon with good condition and repair, and as an incentive to encourage community redevelopment. A community redevelopment tax in city program is hereby established and authorized by Article nine, Section two, Paragraph seven of the nineteen eighty-three Constitution of the State of Georgia. Definitions: Blighted property, blight or bright blight, means any organized or developed property which presents two or more of the following conditions: Unhabitable, unsafe, or abandoned structure; inadequate provisions for ventilation, light, air, or sanitation; and in the harm to life or other property caused by fire, flood, hurricane, tornado, earthquake, storm, or other natural catastrophe; reinspection for which the manager has declared emergency under state law, or has certified a need for a disaster assistance under a federal law. Provided however, this division shall not apply to property unless the relevant public agency has given notice in writing to the property owner regarding specific harm caused by the property, and the owner fails to take reasonable measures to remedy the harm. A site identified by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency as a superfund site pursuant to Title forty, pursuant to forty-two of OCGA Section ninety-six oh one, and subsequent sections, are having environmental contamination, which an expert that requires remedial investigation or a feasibility study. Repeated illegal activity on individual property of the property owner, new or should have known, or the maintenance of such of the property, is below state, county, or municipal codes for at least one year, written notice of code violations to its owner, and is conducted to ill health, transmission of disease, infant mortality, or crime in the intermediate proximity of the property. Property shall not be deemed blighted solely because of aesthetic conditions. Building inspector means a certified inspector, processing requisite qualifications to determine minimal code compliance. Community redevelopment means any activity, project, or service necessary or incidental to achieving the redevelopment or revitalization of a redevelopment area, or portion thereof designated for redevelopment through an urban redevelopment plan or through the local ordinance relating to the repair, closing, or demolition of buildings and structures unfit for human habitation. Governing authority means the city council of the City of Jasper, Georgia, a municipal corporation. Millage rate means levy and mills, which is established by the governing authority for the purpose of financing in whole or in part the levy and jurisdiction general fund expenses for a fiscal year. Person means any individual, partnership, corporation, business entities, or associations which return real property for ad lour taxes and who are chargeable by law for taxes on the property. Public officer means the city manager or such officer, or employee of the city as designated by the city manager, following the duties and responsibilities hereafter set forth in this article. Ad lour taxes on blighted property. There's hereby levied on all real property within the city, which has been officially identified and maintained in a blighted condition, an increase in property tax by a factor of seven to the millage rate applied to the property, so that such property shall be taxed at a higher millage rate generally applied in the municipality, or otherwise provided by general law, provided however that the real property on which there is situated dwelling, which is being occupied as a primary residence of one or more persons, shall not be subject to increased taxation. Such increased ad lour tax shall be applied in the first tax bill rendered following the official designation of real property blighted. Revenues arising from the increased rate of ad lour taxation shall upon receipt be segregated by the city manager, and used only for community redevelopment purposes as identified in an approved urban redevelopment program, including to frame the cost of the city's program to close, repair, or demolish unfit buildings or structures. identification of blighted property. In order for a parcel of real property to be officially designated as blighted condition and subject to increased taxation, the following steps must be completed. Inspection must be performed on a parcel of property in order for an inspection being performed. A request may be made by the public officer and at least five residents of the city for inspection of a parcel of property, and the inspection of which, based upon criteria of delineation in order, or a public officer may cause a survey of the existing housing condition to be performed, or may refer to any such survey conducted or finalized within the previous five years to locate or identify any parcels in which may be in a blighted condition and for which full inspection should be conducted to determine that the parcel property meets the criteria set forth in this article for designation as being maintained in a blighted condition. A written inspection report for the findings for any parcel of property inspected pursuant to subsection one above shall be prepared and submitted to the public officer, where feasible photographs of the conditions found to exist on the property on the date of inspection shall be made, supplement the inspection report, which complies with the minimum construction, housing, occupancy, and fire and light housing, occupancy, and fire and life inspections, safety codes, in effect within the city or in question. The inspection shall be conducted by a certified inspector possessing the requisite qualifications to determine the minimum code compliance. Following compliance of the inspection report, the public officer shall make a determination in writing that the property is maintained in a blighted condition as defined by this article and is subject to increased taxation. Public officer shall cause the written report of his determination that the real property at issue is being maintained in a blighted condition and be served upon a person known as the most recent, as the most recent tax digest of Pickens County as responsible for the payment of the adware of tax assessed thereon, provided, however, that through such existence of reasonable diligence, it becomes known to the public official that the real property has been sold or conveyed since publication of the most recent tax digest. Written notice shall be given to the persons known or reasonably believed to them own the property or chargeable with the payment of adware of tax thereon at the best address available. Service in the manner set forth in OCGA section forty-one dash two dash twelve shall constitute sufficient notice to the property owner or persons chargeable with the payment of the adware of tax, purpose of this section. Referring that posting of this notice on the property will not be required. The written notice given to the person chargeable with the payment of the adware of tax shall notify such persons of the public officer's determination the real property is being maintained in a blighted condition, and shall advise such persons of the hours and locations at which the person may inspect and copy the public officer's determination and any supporting documentation. Persons notified that the real property of which is chargeable to the payment of the adware of tax shall within thirty days from receiving the notice to wish the request of a hearing before the city municipal court. Written request for a hearing shall be filed, shall be filed with the public officer and shall be dated stamped upon receipt. Upon receipt of the request for a hearing, the public officer shall notify the municipal court of such district, municipal court or other appropriate court, and the building inspector or persons who perform the inspection and prepare the inspection report within thirty days from the receipt of a request for a hearing. The municipal court court shall at the date, time, and location of the hearing and shall give at least ten business days' notice to the person requesting the hearing. The public officer and the building inspector are persons who perform the inspections and prepare the inspection report. Notice of the scheduled hearing shall be published in the legal advertisement in the Pickens County office or other designated legal organ of Pickens County at least five days prior to the hearing. Hearings may be conducted by the municipal court judge and requested of any party for good cause. At the hearing, the public officer shall have the burden of demonstrating by the ponderance of the evidence that the subject property is maintained in a blighted condition as defined by this article. The municipal court judge shall cause a record of the evidence submitted at the hearing to be maintained upon hearing from the public officer and their witnesses and the persons requesting the hearing and their witnesses. The judge municipal court shall make a determination either affirming or reversing the determination of the public officer. The determination shall be advised and copies thereof shall be served upon party by certified mail or statutory overnight delivery. The determination by the court shall be deemed fine. A copy of such determination shall be served on the tax commissioner of Pickens County, who shall include the increased tax on the next revenue tax bill rendered on behalf of the city. Persons agreed by determination of the court affirming the determination of the public officer, make petition to superior court in Pickens County for a writ of certiorari within thirty days of issuance of the court's written determination. Remediation and redevelopment. A property owner or persons who is chargeable with the payment of the adware of tax on real property which has been officially designated pursuant to this article as properly maintained in a blighted condition, make petition to public officer to lift the designation upon proof of compliance with the law. Completion of work required under the plan of remedial action or redevelopment approved by the city's planning and development director, which addresses the conditions of blight found to exist or within the property, including compliance with all applicable minimum codes. Our completion of the work required under a court order entered in a proceeding brought to the unfit buildings or structures under the code of the City of Jasper. Before the petition to lift the designation, the public officer shall cause the property to be thoroughly inspected by the building inspector, who by written inspection shall certify that all requisite work has been performed to applicable codes in a workmanlike manner in accordance with specifications of the plan of remedial action or redevelopment or applicable court order. Upon finding that the required work has been satisfactorily performed, the public officer shall issue a written determination that the real property is no longer maintained in a blighted condition. Copies of this determination shall be served upon persons chargeable with the payment of adware of tax and upon the tax commissioner of Pickens County. All plans for remedial action or redevelopment shall be in writing signed by the persons chargeable with the payment of written adware of taxes on the property as the director of the city's planning and development department and containing the following. Plans shall be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and all laws in order to govern the subject property, and shall conform to any urban redevelopment plan adopted for the area within which the property lies. Plans shall set forth in reasonable detail the requirements for repair, closure, demolition, restoration of existing structures in accordance with the minimum statewide codes where structures The plans shall include provisions for debris removal, stabilization, and landscaping of the property. On parcels of five acres or greater, the plan shall address the relationship to the local objectives respecting land use, improved traffic, public transportation, public utilities, recreation, and community facilities, and other public improvements. Plans shall contain verifiable funding sources which will be used to complete its requirements and show feasibility thereof. The plan shall contain a timetable for completion of the required work. Any outstanding adware of taxes state, school, county, and city shall be increased tax pursuant to this article, and government liens due payable on such property must be satisfied in full. Decrease in tax rate. Real property which has been designated and maintained in a blighted condition, removed from the public, removed by the public officer, and deemed identified as blighted property in this article, shall be eligible for a decrease in the rate of city adware of taxes by applying a factor of zero point five to the city's millage rate applied to the property, so that such property shall be taxed in a lower millage rate than the millage rate generally applied in the municipality or otherwise provided by general law. Such decrease rate of taxation shall be applied beginning with the next tax bill rendered following removal of official designation of real property, real property in blight. The decrease rate of taxation must be given in successive years depending on the amount of costs expended by the persons chargeable with the payment of adware of taxes on the property to satisfy its remediation or redevelopment, and with every twenty-five thousand dollars or portion thereof equal to one year of tax reduction. Provided, however, that no property shall be entitled to a reduction in city adware of taxes for more than four to seven years. In order to claim entitlement for the decrease rate of taxation, the person chargeable with the payment of the adware of taxes on the property shall submit a notarized affidavit to the public officer, supported by receipts or other evidence of payment of the amount It shall be the duty of the public officer to notify the tax commissioner of Pickens County in writing as to the designation of a specific property as maintained in a blighted condition. Such notice shall identify the specific property by street address, tax map, block, parcel number, as assigned by Pickens County Tax Assessor's Office. The public officer shall cooperate with the tax commissioner to ensure the tax billings of low properties subject to the increase or reduction of adware of taxation under this article. All other orders in conflict here either hereby repealed. If any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, that holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. This ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Intend a motion?
So.
Motion to approve, that's ready.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion. Bill, very good job.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Unanimous? Update the one twenty-five North Main Street purchase, Jim?
Mayor, council, at our work session, it was discussed purchase of the one twenty-five North Main Street property that had been approved by council earlier. Recommendation from city attorney was that we go ahead and purchase the property with cash. There is approximately two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars on the budget for this purpose. I ask consideration of doing as the council has advised in purchasing the property with cash.
Two hundred twenty-five thousand, say that again.
Budget for parks is two hundred twenty-five thousand.
We're gonna take money out of parks?
Out of the capital plan for parks, yes.
Okay. Intend a motion?
Make a motion, we move to buy the property with the parks.
A motion and a second. The motion was to purchase the integral property with money budgeted for parks, seconded by John Fowles, any discussion? Being in all favor, put your hands. Unanimous? Item E, update on Stormwater Drain System, Speedburger.
Was able to talk to Ben Trail last Thursday while he was on, in city hall. Ben informed me he's still working on the information for disclosure. Hopefully, we have it at the next meeting.
Could be whole business?
Be whole business.
Item L, alcohol license, beer and wine request for continuation, Woodbridge, Mr. Underwood?
I would like to ask the council to permit me the continuation of the alcohol license for the Woodbridge Inn. We've got their, moved all their stuff back now.
So everything you have except the continuation of the advertisement?
Yeah.
Intend a motion to continue the process with the advertisement for the Woodbridge alcohol license, that would be beer and wine request?
Yes.
Intend a motion?
Sue.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Being in all favor, put your hands. Thank you, council.
This, to continue with this item, this has been advertised in the paper. Next Thursday's paper will make the fourth advertisement for that. There is an interest from the restaurant to be able to serve at the Valentine's Day dinner on February fourteenth. Would request a special meeting be scheduled for earliest time, which would be February eighth, to approve the city license, and then they can start working on obtaining the state license.
Are they not already working off of Hans's license?
Yeah.
How can they continue doing that?
They, this is a request from them, and I, no, they're not working off, they're working off, Hans doesn't have a state license.
They're selling presently, aren't they?
They, aren't?
Aren't they selling presently? The owners at Woodbridge?
I don't know.
Boy, I just heard in a minute, a few minutes ago, that they were working off of, the council approved them to use the previous license.
I thought they had been approved to work off of.
Yeah.
They don't own the building yet.
But they're still, they're selling tonight, aren't they? After all?
I don't believe they have a state license. They're working to get a state license, and they have a request for this.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to not have to have a meeting that would not, necessary. Could you find out, if you will notify the council, if that's gonna be a requirement? Council gonna approve it, but based on what I heard from the minister, that they're in business until all this is approved. And that should, I think that should be.
With the understanding that Hans had renewed his license.
But he had not.
My understanding is that has not happened.
That would be a good, good reason. So what date do you need to meet?
Earliest date would be February eighth.
Okay, as a favor to the new owners of Woodbridge, must be the last best from town, the second at least. Would intend a motion to approve this request?
Sue.
And a motion to approve the council meeting. I'm gonna take that as, I guess with that, I will direct you to set that date.
We'll do it on the eighth. What would be a good time to meet?
Let me give a second. I'm gonna do this from a request from council, because this is, you're asking us, I got a motion, second, discussion. Being in all favor, put your hands. That's official, council, we want to agree to meet with you.
So that would be this kind of. So that would be this kind of Friday?
Because I would not want to call a meeting, uh, even for my good friends, uh, the Hendersons, uh, to do this because it'd be called the mayor's office constantly uh, becoming for the council. Or this is quite an ordinary, I guess.
Yes, it is.
Okay, you have more questions, guys?
I think you're fixing to go to win with the meet?
Yeah. Uh.
I would be able to be here until after five thirty.
Yeah, we can meet at five, six o'clock.
Six o'clock meeting, that, uh, reasonable for everyone.
I'll take the minutes. Okay, what day was it again, Jim? The eighth?
This coming Friday.
Friday?
Yeah, July.
I'm receiving my request. Are you serious? Is that the only way we can get in?
Yeah.
Can't do that, uh, when, when God does that?
Fourteenth is Thursday next week, so that gives them four days.
Four days. We can't do that Thursday?
No, I would ask three after the, the, uh, fourth.
That, that, that come down Thursday?
Thursday's the seventh.
What about early Friday morning?
We can do it early Friday morning if you desire.
Can we do that?
I'm available.
Yeah, I need three. Okay, we got two.
We got two.
Uh, six o'clock Friday.
Six o'clock, we will put out a notice.
Okay. What was that? Okay. We'll do that. Uh, old business. We got guests here tonight. Uh, old business, uh, week, uh, executive session, uh, to deal with legal counsel regarding John Lane rezoning, Official Code of Georgia fifty dash fourteen dash two. Mr. Pickett, you wanna tell us why we need to go into closed session?
Well, I requested it. Talking about land.
Dealing with land, okay?
We have a motion, we go into closed session.
A motion, go into closed session, 'cause most of the second, any discussion? Being on, favor with show of hands? That's five four. Uh, we'll be back shortly, uh, guest. And Mr. DePizio, I'm sure we're not entertaining you well enough tonight.
Well, as long as Mr. Pickett doesn't read that thing over again.
I believe when we went into closed, I can entertain a motion to come out of closed session, please?
I might motion to come out of, uh, executive session.
Got a motion, second, discussion? Being on, favor with show of hands? Officially out. Thank you for your understanding. Uh, I believe when we went into closed session, uh, it was defined as dealing with proper. Is that correct, Bill? It's more, it's more of legal, legal issue that we were having to discuss, which is something that the council can go into closed session for. And with that, we're discussing the, uh, legal issue or the zoning issue dealing with John Lane's rezoning. Official Code of Georgia fifty dash fourteen dash two. Mr. Pickett, I would like to recognize you to, uh, give the position of the council.
Uh, back in December, I believe it was, I'm not really sure, but I think it was, 'cause we had a meeting held with the, um, council. And, um, the issue of rezoning came up on a piece of property there on John, John Lane. And, uh, I don't remember exactly who the developer was, but, um, council voted, um, to rezonate the property to R three with the condition that they received a letter from the ERC, which is the Appalachian Regional Commission, uh, that it did not violate the grant that we got to build the water tower. And, uh, they furnished a letter back to us, um, stating it did not violate the terms of that grant. And it's my position, you, that matter's closed. You've already zoned it. Nobody has made a request to rescind it. Uh, the property owner has not made a request to rescind that. So I think it's, uh, over.
And with that, Jim, you said there was some gentleman wanting to make a presentation?
Brad had mentioned, uh, he'd, uh, like to make a statement if possible.
Well, my, my request for a statement was if the city was gonna go ahead with approving that zoning. I appreciate the time this evening, Mayor and Council. The city, I think, has failed to handle this request in a proper manner in a legal matter, uh, from notifying me, uh, from supplying me the statutes I requested from, I've requested from Jim three times. He's been very helpful, but I've requested three times for the council to reach out to me, not for me to try to talk them into how this affects me financially, that they would change this zoning, 'cause it does affect me financially. If the city does go through with this zoning, I have three choices to do with that property, all three of those cost me money. They definitely will lose me the tenant that I have now. I'm discouraged that the city did not reach out to me or notify me in the beginning. But, um, that's kinda where I gotta leave it. If the city chooses to go through with it, then it's gonna cost me money and I have three methods that I have to take. But I'm disappointed if you do go through with it. I've only been reached out to by one council member.
Well, I, I think Mr. Pickett's statement gave our specific action, course of action.
Yeah.
And as, as of his statement, uh, he said we have no other option except to uphold what we said we would do.
If it were possible, I would make a suggestion, if Mr. Pickett was able to weigh in on this, that I believe your statutes call for you to notify all the property, uh, zoning property owners. And I do adjoint this. I was not notified. Proof that I wasn't notified, y'all have no proof that I was. Therefore, how can any action you took on rezoning the property where you did not notify the, uh, zoning property owners, that's in the beginning? You didn't notify me, how could you possibly, something you voted on after, technically be out of order?
Mr. Pickett, you wanna address that statement?
Well, uh, our, our building zoning people tell us they did notify you.
I've got the letter that they sent to you.
They, they mailed you one, sir. And if the records that you did closing, uh, didn't reflect the proper address for, you just received the mail.
That's inaccurate.
Then that's, you know.
They mailed it to my tenant, sir. They mailed it to my tenant.
They mailed it to your building.
No, well, I've got, how many buildings in Jasper? I got a tenant, you could've mailed it to all ten of them, I still wouldn't have gotten it.
Don't have a clue about that.
All of my property tax bills that the city and the county send me, I give, all of them. None of them go to my buildings, they all come to me. So all of my corporations that I hold property in in Jasper, none of those were mailed. I have the letter in my pouch with me today that the city mailed. So I mean, if you'd like to see it, I'll show it to you. It wasn't mailed to me.
That's not gonna change my mind.
Okay, well.
Mr. Shouse, you have, like, you wanna say something?
Oh, yeah.
I'll say something.
Will you please stand and identify yourself?
Oh, well, David Shouse. Well, first of all, Brad was down at city hall numerous times. We believed meeting with Mr. Looney, not to throw him in it, telling him we were buying this property. And so there was ample opportunity for someone in the city to tell him that this rezoning's going on. Forgive me, Mr. Pickett, I was never notified under Manitowoc of any kind of rezoning. And second of all, third of all, excuse me, at the December meeting, if you'll go back and watch the videotape, you guys were too busy arguing with the mayor and vice versa to allow the public to talk. So you're gonna have your hands full. I mean, you're, you're gonna get tagged about this thick if you pass it. Just letting you know. So next time, make sure you let the public talk. What we're supposed to do, jump up and down, tell y'all need to talk? Need to go back and look at that tape. But Brad was never told during that. In fact, you guys knew he was buying it because you had the rezoning? Or, uh, what, we had to do that street, Brad?
Yeah, we needed to, the road to Ralph Hicks for the purpose of the sale, and that was probably in September or so that you, you handled that yourself, I think.
Uh, your lawyer never sent it to me.
Uh, not my lawyer.
The closing lawyer.
I don't know if he handled it. I just said I saw him. But I know you were in and out.
They were, they were gonna give it to me and they never did.
It still doesn't negate Manitowoc not to notify.
Wasn't, did he give it, Harkman wasn't?
Never did.
Okay, give me a favor, strictly here, we can lose control really quick. Uh, you, you're saying who was not more notified?
Manitowoc was never notified, nor was the AFTK of my other property, I don't know if they're.
Okay.
And I don't see how I didn't get anything. So you can say that Brad wasn't notified. But if you're saying you didn't know he bought it, then why wasn't I notified? On AFTK?
Is Pickett any responsible with that?
I don't have any, only thing I know is, um, all right, what were you saying, that they didn't notification?
May I show this to you? Yes, please, if you will.
I, I know.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna ask you to hold Brad, we'll see it later. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to close this to saying that the council actions in December was, uh, specific and by, uh, recommendation of council, we were to follow what the council did that evening and, uh, were aware of the issues. Thank you so much for your time, City Council. Uh, next item, under new business, alcohol ordinance amendment, uh, Sunday brunch hours, Jim?
As Mayor, council, we have, uh, had some interest, from council member, about looking at, um, matching the city's, uh, Sunday brunch or Sunday, uh, hours for serving alcohol to closer to what the state has. I believe the state's is eleven or eleven-thirty. Ours is twelve-thirty. Uh, and then also looking at the, uh, percent wine to, or liquor to food sales percentages. Uh, uh, we've got, uh, a percent that's somewhat different than the state's.
Didn't we address that sometime back and lowered it some?
Lowered it some, uh.
So you recommended the council, we go to specific state requirements?
That, uh, if council sees fit, uh, appoint a council member to work with city manager, come up with a, uh, a, a solution that could be voted on.
May I ask why is this an issue? Is there something going on that, uh, I'm not aware of?
I, as we talked at the
This is a continuation council effort, so.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Exactly. Uh, there's no, no requests out there.
Come in, this is the council trying to get it closer.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who would like to work as a committee?
Well, one. With, uh, the triliumy and the future, uh, city manager.
Ian? Uh, I guess you get to make the presentation during next month, I guess. Okay? That sound good, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, item B, request for a special events license, Carriage House. I'm sorry, we're gonna overlook that tonight. Come on up if you want to.
They had vast need to present this.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know.
And, uh, certainly if you have questions, they will be available to, uh, to answer. Friday morning, I had a, uh, employee come in and say they had a request, actually, uh, two employees came in, said they had a request, uh, from Carriage House to have a special permit to serve, uh, beer and wine. Particularly, I think, wine is
Yeah, pretty much, I would think, wine.
Yeah. Uh, on, uh, Valentine's Day, next Thursday, the fourteenth, Thursday of the week. Uh, my immediate response was, was no way to do that. And then all of a sudden, we came up with an ordinance that does allow that. It's on the books, we can come up with it. Uh, but I showed it to Bill. Uh, Bill agrees if, uh, council, actually, it says the mayor can, uh, approve it and then council has to set a fee for it.
Want, how many, what's the max fee? Just wanna know if we could veto it or something?
Hey, you say that, but you're up on the other end of the table.
Okay, you, you, give me a favor, read the ordinance for us. Uh, this, this is just for the PCO's benefit.
Yeah, uh, we haven't had enough reading for this. This one's very short. Uh, section ten dash twenty-six of Jasper City Code, special events license. The mayor may authorize issuance of a special events license that permits the sale of alcoholic beverages on a temporary basis for the purpose of a special event only. Mayor's application may include special terms and conditions, a waiver of the fingerprinting and background check and other exceptions from, uh, requirements of this chapter as the mayor may deem appropriate in circumstances. Provided however, that no special events license shall be issued for a period of more than one day. Um, provided however, no more than three special events licenses shall be issued, issued per applicant in a calendar year. Fees for special licenses, um, shall be provided by city council and shall not be subject to waiver. In addition, um, issued special licenses shall comply with provisions of Official Code of Georgia three eleven dash two or other applicable provisions of state law.
And as I understand, that she has to get some approval from the state?
Yes, she'll have to take this.
Otherwise it'd be bootlegging.
Yeah.
And they are aware of it.
Okay. And, uh, did we just solve the Woodbridge problem as well for about another day we don't have to meet?
That's a, that's a short-term solution there.
Yeah. A, a long-term solution.
How long would it move for you, you'd be annoyed by making mistakes?
If we put it out today, they said, I think it was forty-eight hours.
Okay. This is, we, I remember passing this sometime back and, uh, and this was our first request on it, actually, I think. So that's why it's a little bit confusing. Uh, and, and I think what we've, like a business, we did not set a fee for one day. We gotta hurt you a little bit because otherwise you, everybody being Christmas and New Years and, uh, and, uh,
I don't want New Year's.
And Thanksgiving and Valentine's.
Valentine's.
Well, the tree I'd be a good guy.
It's reimbursement for Friday morning when we, uh, fought through this stuff.
Okay, with that, I'm sure that the council will probably wear it. What kind of fee are we looking at? What kind of, any ideas? Now, let me, let me say this. We, we have a former business owner here who bought a beer and wine license and, uh, we're, we're not talking about any rebates or anything right now. So, but what we're saying is, you're gonna be competing against people who have a beer and wine license for that one day. Uh, the Woodbridge, if they had a license and you, you're looking at, uh, New York Pizza, people who pay the big bucks for the full deal. So council, keep that in mind when you're making your decision as to what would be a factor. You gotta keep, you gotta keep your other businesses in line and mind, not line. With that, it's up to the council, welcome to the floor of the council.
So a year for beer and wine, how much, Sunday?
Beg your pardon?
One year for beer and wine is how much?
Nine fifty to serve.
Nine fifty?
Yes.
And this allows four times a year, presumably, three times a year?
And I might, uh, might suggest you wait for Bill. I don't know if there's any state minimum requirements for a minimum. Bill may be able to answer that if there is.
I don't think he knows the, I'll cut that.
Do, do we give somebody a special license? When, when we give that?
It's a paper package.
That package, that guy does.
Yeah, they have, they, they have, it's not a special event, it is a
It's a special program.
Yeah.
They only mean some, well, plenty of time.
Mr. Pickett? You're gonna need your expertise.
Sorry.
Do you know of any, uh, fee that the state requires?
Minimum fee for special.
Oh, recognizing somebody in the crowd, yes.
State special event fee is a hundred dollars. I don't think you should charge her anything.
Well, we didn't ask you that.
I'm just giving you my opinion. As a former restaurateur with a liquor license, she wouldn't do no damage to me. She would've actually probably bought more people to the downtown area and I would've got the overflow. So being that she's probably gonna just pay a hundred dollars to the state, give her the license. Who cares? It's not gonna hurt anybody. Who cares? It's not gonna hurt anybody. She's gonna pay a hundred to the state, give her the license for the day. It's a nice event, it brings people downtown.
Did you bring him in just for this?
No, I didn't bring him, I didn't buy, so I didn't do anything.
But I, I think that it's, it's a Valentine.
I feel a lot, I feel a lot better about this if you still had your business going.
Well, you know what, if I'd had my business still going, things like this would have helped her. So why charge her for it? Because maybe you don't, maybe someone will go from her place to Woodbridge to six to one man.
Thank you for your input.
All right.
Doesn't it say we can't waive the fee?
It says you can't waive a fee once it's established. I would suggest a fee of some type. I'm not going to give you an amount, but.
So she'll have to go through the state, and that fee is a hundred dollars?
That's, that's pretty good.
It's not even a whole day, it's only like five hours. It's from six to ten.
Something's all right to keep.
Um, come on my direct message.
You're taking a motion?
Yeah.
I made a motion, we set a fee at twenty-five dollars.
I love you guys. Thank you.
Give me this, what did I do? You even got discussion, this guy, uh, second?
Second.
Got motion second, discussion. Being that, I'll take it with your hands. And you wait down all night, I'm just glad to have you.
I did stay all night, my first evening, too. I don't want to be back.
Uh, so.
They need to know that they can't buy anything from a liquor store to serve up there.
Yes, he said I could buy his.
Uh, I, I would, that's outside our. That's it, that's state issues, but you need to be aware of all those state issues because there's a little thing called, uh,
I don't want to get into trouble.
Exactly, that's what you don't get in trouble with, that would be bootlegging, so I use that word lightly there.
So you've got an application she can fill out, uh.
Did you find out what you tonight?
You told me to. You're right on top of it, you fill out an application, uh, pay the fee, and I think with this approval, you can start working with the state.
We'll, we'll let you worry about the state with our administration.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you all for your.
And have your Valentine's Day.
Come for Valentine's dinner.
I would have had it for Thursday.
You come and have it, oh, I love it.
What are your hours, Donna?
Um, you mean for Valentine's dinner? Six to ten. Six o'clock seating and then an eight o'clock seating.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, thank you very much.
Item C, yard lawn sign control, Jim?
Yes, uh, again, as discussed at the work session, we had a request from citizen to look at cleaning up some of the yard signs around town. We do have an ordinance that allows that. Uh, my reason for bringing in council today is actually so that possibly people would hear it on nopickings.com or and read it. Progress, that we are going to be, um, putting some effort into that over the next few weeks. Picking up illegal yard signs around town.
Okay, the only signs that are allowed legally are?
Real estate.
Real estate signs. So, uh, somebody can sell potatoes or onions or squash or buying the dog is really illegal. Basically, when you attach those to, uh, stop signs or any other poles or street signs, et cetera. Uh, so the city will be enforcing that over the next few weeks. Catch you back up, Jim, know what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll wait till the paper comes out and.
And you're just notifying the council?
We're gonna.
Item D, consideration of electronic filing system, building permits, drawings and plans, Jim?
Had a presentation at the work session concerning, uh, electronic filing, drawings, plans and permits for, uh, our, our building activity. Something council again had some interest in, asked for another, uh, committee of possibly one to work with the city manager to review different options out there, and the one we heard from is not the only option, there are many more.
Okay, with that, I'd like to appoint Kirk. And he seemed like he was into the computer issue of that. So Kirk, will you take that appointment?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, can we move on with that until next Monday? You keep it all business?
Yeah, I'd keep that.
Okay.
And that's not gonna be something that comes out quickly, it's gonna take some time. We'll, we'll have a little report next month if you want.
Okay, item E, Burn Mountain Lift Station, or Lift Station Pump, David?
I'm inviting council.
How you doing, David?
Good, good, very good. Uh, this is the same, uh, bids that were for last month, Burn Mountain Lift Station is the same as Indian Forest Lift Station. It's four horse horsepower. We have the same two bids, uh, from the two companies we deal with. North Georgia Electric Incorporated and Gainesville, Georgia had a bid for the thirty-one horsepower motor at fifteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. And James Electric has this bid, uh, signed last month, on the thirty-one horsepower, four hundred and sixty volt, three hundred, three thousand five hundred RPM, uh, motor at fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. So James Electric is low bid on the pump station, and this was on the budget.
And you've done business with James Electric in the past?
Yes.
As well as the other one?
Yes.
And so you recommended to the council a low bid of fourteen thousand eight sixty-five, what did that amount?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yes, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five.
Okay. Make a motion that we take James Electric at fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five, which is a budget, item. Need a second?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Take a point of privilege here in saying that, uh, right now you're having to hand pump or manually pump this station. Is there any way in the future that you can get you an extra pump?
That's what we're, uh, we're redoing that whole panel, hopefully Friday, we've got a company coming in, it's what I says Charles, and for fifteen hundred dollars, they're gonna redo that whole panel, so hopefully it will improve.
Then, but you'd love to have all these land over to the.
Yes.
What we're, something you might put in the budget next year, if not sooner, if you can come up with it. Because that's a real pain.
That's right.
Okay, uh, I'll take it with your hands, okay, you down, thank you David. Top Rock Project, item S, Top Rock Project additional pipe?
This is also an item that is on the budget under Top Rock, uh, Project. Or maybe it's finished Top Rock Project, I can't remember exactly.
Top Rock Project, uh, some, some version, I'm not sure. It is on the budget, but.
Okay, and we like, uh, two thousand feet of six inch C nine hundred VR eighteen PVC pipe to finish the job. And I'm asking for council permission to go ahead, uh, Corning Maine uh, is gonna hold their price that we paid for the six inch, uh, that we originally bought, the nine thousand feet of pipe that we originally bought at three dollars and eighty-three cents a foot. They're gonna hold that, uh, when I was asking to purchase that without.
Okay, so two thousand, two thousand times three eighty-three is how much? You multiply that again?
No, I didn't. The budget, there's fifty thousand left in.
I just wanted, that's why I just wanted to give it for the record.
Second.
So eighty-three?
Three, three eighty-three.
Two thousand.
Seven thousand six hundred and sixty.
Okay, seven thousand six hundred and sixty, so? Okay, and this price, I heard you say the other night at the workshop, that this was the price that you got the last bid, and since that time, obviously prices have gone up. So he gonna give you the same price?
He's gonna hold that price.
You're gonna have a motion to approve the, uh, additional cost, uh, for additional pipe for the, to finish up Top Rock? Got a motion to approve seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for the project?
Second.
Got a motion second? For the two thousand feet of, uh, pipe at three eighty-three. Uh, you got seven dollars, you can write this any way you want to, get it back to us. Um, all favor with your hand, that's unanimous, thank you David. You had more trouble with the planning, Christian, than I did. Paying even that.
All the way.
Eagle Point landfill agreement, David?
Uh, every, every so often, we review the, uh, bill uh, that we received the leachate from, uh, Eagle Point landfill. And when we were looking at it this year, myself and Jim and Lindsay and Lisa, we, uh, noticed that they are going over what we had previously put as the maximum, which was two thousand to three thousand. And we were allowing them to do the, that whole thousand point on the onion, uh, for the twelve cents.
When we first started, what was the volume of onion? Five, four to five?
Yeah, four hundred, five hundred thousand, somewhere in there.
So they got really bad?
Yes, well, yeah, they wanna, some places they take it, uh, don't charge them for the concentration, they charge them for the volume. So they don't really care how high it is, you know, but we do, we charge them for the concentration. Uh, we sample every load that we can, and they pay for the concentration of the load, not the volume of the load.
So we used to get five cents a gallon for anything under ten at the time, now, so what, is it running two thousand? What are you gonna give for the two thousand?
Uh, there are no price increases for them as long as they stay at the old, uh, concentration. If they go above the concentration, it will go from twelve cents to seventeen cents.
Okay.
Per gallon. But as long as they stayed where they were, there was no price increase. And they were fine with it.
With the rainwater that we've had? Is that, that should have caused it to go down.
That's what we were thinking, but it, it hasn't.
Okay.
They've tried and tried to take water back from top and let it come back through.
That's, 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 that's gonna jack it up for you.
They turned it into like a wet mop.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what they're doing.
They just run through it.
Okay. Uh, so we want to entertain a motion to approve this new price change so that we can actually have a contract to make more money. And, it's wrong to me, but I felt like it's a city council thing needs to approve. So we'd entertain a motion to, uh, read the process again, go from one to one, we don't need the whole contract.
Prices are changing.
Read that contract.
Agreement between the.
Yes, yes, it's short.
It's an easy agreement, it's May the thirty-first day of December two thousand nineteen, between the city of Jasper, Georgia, referred to as the city Eagle Point landfill LLC, herein after referred to as a landfill. Terms, initial term of this agreement commence with January first two thousand nineteen and terminate Jan, December thirty-first two thousand nineteen, and shall thereafter automatically review official term of one year beginning January first two thousand twenty, and annually thereafter, one year, on a one-year basis, if not terminated as described below, under termination. Service to be provided by the city, the city agrees except the seasonal court at the city's control plant. Herein due, referred to as the plant located on four fifty Monty Drive, Jasper, Georgia, up to twenty-five thousand gallons dated with date originating at the landfill, manager and wastewater, with pre-approved at alternative control locations as determined by the mayor, city manager and Water Wastewater Superintendent, the city so obtain consents, licenses and permits enabled it to lawfully receive, treat leachate from the landfill pursuant to this agreement. Parties here to acknowledge that by the nature of this leachate varies in its concentrations, the various constitutes and thereof. The landfill makes no representation or warranties as to the exact concentration of the leachate provided. City shall provide low tickets for each load upon delivery in order to determine number of gallons being delivered. Hours of operation, the city will deliver. City will be open for delivery every day of the week with exception of holidays, which are as follows, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Arrangements for, arrangements for around the holidays that follow on normal operating days will be made in advance between both parties. Billing information, the city will invoice semi-monthly gallons of leachate delivered to the plant, invoices payable within forty-five days. The city will suspend acceptance of the leachate upon invoice of the forty-five days of leak one. The landfill will be notified, and the suspension will begin immediately upon notification. The city will lift the suspension upon payment of outstanding invoices. The city self shall provide license south at the plant to test random loads, as well as have a private lab to test the random loads of leachate upon delivery in order to determine the liver's levels of ammonia using an approved EPA method. From the results of this landfill, from the results, landfill will be given the lower of the two points. Landfill reserves the right to request excess results and/or corresponding calibration information associated with the rate schedule. The landfill will be billed per gallon according to the following concentrations, one gram per liter and cents per gallon respectively. Zero to four hundred and four cents, four hundred to four ninety-nine, five cents, five hundred to five ninety-nine, six cents, six hundred to six ninety-nine, seven cents, seven hundred to nine ninety-nine, eight cents, a thousand to twelve ninety-nine, nine cents, thirteen hundred to fifteen ninety-nine, ten cents, sixteen hundred to eighteen ninety-nine, eleven cents, nineteen hundred to two thousand ninety-nine, twelve cents, twenty-one hundred to twenty-two ninety-nine, thirteen cents, twenty-three hundred to twenty-four ninety-nine, fourteen cents, twenty-five hundred to twenty-six ninety-nine, fifteen cents, twenty-seven hundred to twenty-eight hundred ninety-nine, sixteen cents, anything twenty-nine hundred plus seventeen cents.
That brought in almost a million dollars this year to the city. Uh, the expenses, that treaty that was nowhere near a million dollars, we're hoping it's related.
By the quarter.
Okay, and I notice you didn't mention anything about, uh, our garbage in the new contract.
I don't think it's.
It hasn't been in any of the contracts, that's the same contract, except the additional, uh, fees for those concentrates that were higher than.
Okay, we need, we need, we need to pop them back garbage rates. Uh, Facebook didn't, it's crazy, no, it might be a lot.
Right now they're holding their, their rates that are very.
What is it, about twenty-six dollars a ton?
And the sludge too, they take the sludge too, and they give us a real good price.
Okay, but we might, we might move that in writing with them the next time we negotiate then.
Okay.
Uh, we entertain a motion to accept this letter or these conditions with advance?
Eagle Point landfill?
It's not waste management, it's.
I said advance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is on here, it's Eagle Point landfill LLC.
Yeah. And advances, asking people to run and run.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, Eagle Point, good point. Any other discussion? If you will take up the record. Uh, all favor with your hand? Thank you council, unanimous. Thank you David. Okay, yes, I can. You wait for me to sign that. Jim, uh, freedom of the biggest kind of chamber tourism development, this is something our auditors are requesting?
Yeah, this is the second year that auditors have requested this agreement, uh, discussed, uh, again at our work session. Like I have a recommendation to be signed. Or a resolution.
You got the resolution?
I think it's in your book.
I may say it, read it, please.
Of course.
Not, not as long, I'm not sure if he paid you this. Long enough, though?
Gary, you got enough of memory in that canvas?
You don't wanna do this people's business, you need to do something else.
I just beg your trust you have enough memory in the canvas, that's all. You got it too?
Yeah, somebody pulled their copy from me. Where's the, the resolution or the contract? Uh, agreement for tourism development-- Auditors or Councils are long with it. John, you want to let that? All right, agreement for tourism development services. This agreement entered into as of the signatures, uh, signature date indicated below. I and between Pickett County Chamber of Commerce, a nonprofit corporation organized under the laws of Georgia, parentheses, the Chamber and the City of Jasper, a Georgia municipal corporation, the city, uh, is as follows. Whereas, the Chamber and the city share a common vision of a progressive community with balanced economic growth to include a diversity of equality of businesses and industry, including tourism industry, and a greater employment opportunity in and income. And whereas, the parties have for several years engaged in a cooperative program of economic and community development, and whereas, the parties have evaluated the current economic conditions and future needs of Pickett County as it pertains to tourism and, uh, and have determined a strategy for addressing those needs, which include further promotion and development of tourism, and a desire to continue a cooperative approach toward economic development. And whereas, the city has levied a six percent hotel motel tax within their jurisdiction for the purpose of more adequately providing funding for local tourism programs, and have approved a budget and proposal for a contract with the Chamber in order to implement tourism development. And whereas, parties require clarity in regard to their annual due diligence and compliance review, and whereas, parties now wish to enter into this contract in order to, uh, give formal evidence of their agreement. And now therefore, the parties agreed to, one, purposes of this contract is to provide for tourism development services desired by city and the Chamber. Two, prior to the end of the calendar year, co-existent with the terms of this contract, the Chamber shall provide the City of Jasper its cost allocation analysis for the succeeding calendar year, including tourism budgets, advertising plans, and cost of allocation plans of the tourism funds. Two, the city agrees, excuse me, that's three. City agrees to provide funds to be derived from the proceeds of their six percent hotel motel tax in an amount equal to two-thirds of the amount collected by the city. Four, the Chamber shall, in consideration of the tax funds referenced above, provide quarterly financial reports to the city by the last, uh, day of each calendar month following the end of the quarter in a form mutually agreed to by both the city and the Chamber. These reports will be used by the city in part to ascertain Chamber's compliance with the terms of this agreement and with OSGA section forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty-one A three point four. City may by sole discretion require during the terms of this agreement additional financial information from the Chamber, including specific receipts, copies of checks, deposits, and other similar items pertaining to tourism funds. Chamber shall also deliver a copy of its annual audit with findings and management comments, as well as the Chamber's accounting system documentation pertaining to tourism funds required by the city's designated auditors prior to February fifteenth of the year following, uh, being the auditing. Chambers shall participate in a compliance audit of tourism funds at the request of and to be paid by the city. To be conducted by the auditor designated by the city, audit would be used to determine compliance of Chamber with terms of the agreement and with requirements of OSCGA section forty-eight thirteen fifty-one A three point five. Chamber shall expedite its response to all sampling requests presented by the auditors and assist, uh, city auditors in completing their work so that the compliance audit can be completed prior to presentation of the city audit to the city council. Six, the entirety of the funds received by the Chamber from the city shall be determined in a bank account separated from other Chamber funds, and said funds are to be expended exclusively on tourism expenses as prescribed by the Department of Community Affairs based upon an invoicing and recording hit record-keeping system satisfactory to the city. Chamber shall make available to the city upon its request documentary support of all funds passing through this account. Seven, it is the intent of the parties of this agreement, uh, implementing in order to assist the development of tourism industry by increasing support of targeting advertising for the development of destiny, quality festivals, and attractions for enhanced visitor services through expanded operating hours and more adequately staffing of the tourism services. Primary goal of tourism development program is to increase the spending and employee stays, and ultimately jobs and incomes for citizens of the city. Eight, in the event of material breach agreement, uh, of this agreement by the Chamber, the city shall notify the Chamber via email. Chamber shall have fifteen days within to cure said material breach made of the receipt of certified notice. Uh, city shall make, in the event of the Chamber's failure to cure, terminate this agreement upon review and agreement by city council. Now, this agreement shall commence as of January first two thousand nineteen and terminate on December thirty-first two thousand nineteen.
Entertained a motion?
Entertained a motion, we approve the agreement as written.
Motion approved? Second. Motion second. Been, uh, favor over your hands? Unanimous. You bid us continue, uh, joint resolution of Pickett County and Pickett County Veterans Memorial Park. Jim? Can you read something here?
Yes, joint resolution of the City, of the City of Jasper and Pickett County, Georgia regarding Veterans Memorial. Whereas, City of Jasper and Pickett County, Georgia own the following prescribed tract of land, and legal description is attached. And whereas, Pickett County Veterans Memorial Park, a Georgia nonprofit corporation, has erected a beautifully, beautiful and stately memorial on a portion of said property purposes, for the purposes of honoring veterans of Pickett County. And whereas, both City of Jasper and Pickett County would like to further develop said memorial and provide possible expansion of the same, and therefore be it resolved. Portion of the above-described area that lies south of Seagull Drive and west of the current location, of the current existing pavement of parking lot shall be reserved to the purposes of honoring veterans of Pickett County. So resolve this day, uh, signature specified the right.
Jim, this, uh, this property that they're referring to is all that green space between the existing memorial and fifty-three.
And fifty-three.
Entertained a motion to approve the, uh, what do they call, a resolution?
It's a joint resolution.
Between City of Jasper, Pickett County, and the veterans. And a motion? Motion second, discussions? Been on all favor over your hands? Thank you, Council. Thank you, Jim. Uh, we'll get it down in here. I did, for Lisa.
Mayor, Council, when you're, uh, in your pocket, you should have, um, the, it's our first report for the year, uh, for January. And I apologize that the budget's not entered yet. We've been trying to get your, what do you, what don't you have?
Well, she got, I'm, I'm, this is an official--
Local option sales tax collected was a hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars.
How much?
A hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-six. Uh, and that's for the month of December, so it's usually this month. The SPOSS fund, we collected ninety-five thousand, one nineteen SPOSS. And if you look at this, it doesn't reflect it, uh, it came in on February first, it hit the bank that day, so. Uh, we've also, though, collected our Lamig money, which is the COT money we did every year, uh, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-five for the month of January. Cash balance in there is a million dollar, one million, thirty thousand, four seventy-four. Uh, and for the month of, um, January, the water fund, we collected fifty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty in leachate. Um, for the whole year of two thousand and eighteen, you said almost a million, we've collected eight hundred and one thousand, four hundred dollars in leachate funds for the year. And that's, that's all I had, that's all I, we're, we're just working hard to get the year closed out. The auditors came, did preliminary work, um, this month, uh, this past month, and they'll be back March eleventh to finish the audit. Well, they won't finish, but they'll, the bulk of it.
Questions, Council? Bonnie, might be roads and other reports.
Mayor, Council, uh, I did receive, uh, an email today, a quote for the relocation of all the utilities on, what we call a big project from Walgreen out toward Williams. And, uh, so it's a, a million and a half dollars. And so I'm waiting for our, that has been forwarded also to, uh, the Georgia DOT. Uh, our engineers, turn-seated engineers, has also been informed, and they are sending them the DOT a notification that we want to apply for the utility aids grant. They will fill out, our engineers have to fill out a certain portion of that. They will fill it out and send it to us, and then the City of Jasper has to finish filling out third portion of it, and then it'll be submitted to the DOT. So we're just gonna have to stand idle on that till, uh, we get all the paperwork done. The, uh, the mass arms for the red lights, traffic lights up in, uh, Main Street and also at Community Bank, those mass arms were ordered right before Thanksgiving, approximately ten weeks ago. They estimated twenty-two weeks to get them to the company, so we're looking at ten, twelve more weeks before they're delivered. The, they should be done in Fannin County, Giver County by then, and be ready to move and start our projects here. Um, the third and last thing I've got is, I just received an email today. Uh, it don't concern us as far as roads, but if you go up Burt Mountain Road and turn left on Jones Mountain or one thirty-six, uh, that bridge is need repaired. Georgia DOT is gonna be, uh, repairing that bridge at some point. They're in phase one, uh, first submission request. The reason it affects us is we have a water main that goes to that intersection with a meter and there's fire hydrant there that ties onto the county water system, and all that utilities are gonna have to be moved and relocated. And so, uh, this request was always, also sent to Lamar Rogers with turn-seated engineering, who will be doing a, uh, the paperwork to make this first submission, and giving us a price what that's gonna cost.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Lon. Chief Loeb?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Justice Police Department for the month of January responded to seven hundred forty-one calls, service nine-one-one, sent, responded to fifty-two motor vehicle accidents. Issued a total of eighty-four citations for the following: one DUI, fifty speeding, three seatbelt, three shoplifting, uh, two texting while driving, one hundred and thirty motors, twenty-two miscellaneous violations, one suspended or revoked, and one possession of marijuana less than ounce. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of eighty citations in the city for grand total in city court of one hundred and sixty-four. Uh, eleven state warrants taken for the following: one aggravated stalking, shoplifting, two misuse of nine-one-one call, one false report of crime, one possession of drug-related offense, one criminal trespass, one DUI, suspended license, reckless driving, fleeing, and attempting to loot, one aggravated assault on motor vehicle, possession of methamphetamine, felony, one theft, lost or mislaid property. Miscellaneous causes upon two, thirty-three alarms, four trespassing and roaring, nineteen disorderly calls, six, uh, forty-two suspicious activities, twelve harassment, sixteen domestic disputes, and investigated, no burglaries.
Questions, Council? Thank you.
How's your new truck?
Ma'am?
How's your new truck?
Uh, it's very nice, I seem to like it. I have to throw it over here, if I can, look at it. Uh, Mr. Levy wanted me to, uh, update y'all, uh, last, uh, couple of Sundays ago. Uh, on the twenty-seventh, uh, Corporal Watson was running a speed detection device down at, uh, one oh eight, you know, mark three. He, uh, shot a vehicle, uh, uh, with his laser, ninety-three and fifty-five, at which time he attempted to conduct a traffic stop. The subject refused to stop, continuing southbound on, uh, five fifteen, leaving the city limits. Uh, secondary unit, Officer Henderson was his backup. They notified neighboring jurisdictions, which was Ball Ground, Cherokee County. The speeds were really not that fast. I think at one time he said he was at forty miles an hour, just, uh, refusing to stop. Uh, Corporal Watson conducted a pit maneuver one time. It was unsuccessful, continued southbound on five seventy-five. At this time, conducted another pit maneuver, at which time it spun him around, at which time he began going southbound, no, northbound in the southbound lanes. As you well know, when you put a three-thousand-pound missile in the wrong way on an interstate, it usually results in fatality more times than any. Uh, Officer Henderson, at a low speed, saw what was happening and quickly used the front end of his vehicle to end that pursuit. And that's what we had to do. And the process has damaged a few cars. Good thing is, there ain't nobody hurt, nobody killed. And, uh, the subject was, uh, arrested for a court on the Georgia State Patrol for three different accidents, two on the pit and one on the, uh, they had on, uh, demobilizing the pursuit vehicle. Um, Georgia State Patrol took, uh, warrants in Cherokee County's venue for aggravated assault on motor vehicle and DUI. He was charged with DUI in the city because he was drunk coming to the city, and he was drunk in Cherokee County, so that charged him in both jurisdictions. And furthermore, his, uh, corporal wrote up, uh, saying, uh, praising Officer Henderson for his heroics entering this, uh, pursuit that could've turned deadly. Uh, I will be writing something up and recognizing him, uh, it's okay at the next council meeting.
How much damage to the vehicle?
Uh, the pit maneuver, not much, by two thousand. And the other one is about eight thousand. But that poor vehicle, I don't know, it's, uh, it's got a omen. But that deer was hit in front of the police department by a deer some last time.
Two thousand, yeah, ten thousand dollars of damage?
Yeah. And that particular vehicle was hit broadside by a deer on, uh, right there at the Methodist Church, and did eleven thousand dollars worth of air back in that name. And we had another pursuit with a different officer that dinged it up a little bit, so. But, but, anyway, there was nobody hurt.
Questions, Council? I'm just disappointed, I spent all late Saturday with you, and you didn't say a thing about that.
On Facebook.
Well, well, that's-- Just a little disappointed.
I, I apologize.
Well, you should. Okay. Bet it's my--
I apologize.
Bet it's my game once, you leave.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Chief Loeb?
Mayor, Council? Before I forget again, our ISO project is complete. We were able to maintain class five. We were not able to go to four. Uh, at this time, there were too many big ticket items in the way to make a four. At this time, there were too many big ticket items in the way to make it four. Maintain a five was relative ease. Was able to lower the rating outside the city from a six to a five. So we're currently five straight across the board. Will be eligible to be re-inspected in about eighteen months to two years. So at this point, we're trying to go to the four again.
What are the items?
There are major issues in place. We've got to build a second fire station. We need to buy a ladder cup. Areas of the water system were not strong enough. There were, there were several big things pointed out. There were areas that I needed five thousand gallons a minute and could only get three thousand. So those are things that have to be addressed over time. We can't fix any of that overnight. I'm looking at response times because of the one station south into the district and things like that can only be fixed by second station further south. Just thinking for the next year and a half, two years.
Pickett County Fire Department didn't help us any with their location?
Yes, we were able to get points off then, but still not able to go to four. But we were able to pull points off of the county. Got a year and a half to two years to recognize the major issue and try again. Questions?
Chief, did they have, do they have a recommended or in a perfect world response time that they would like to see?
Four minutes.
Four minutes?
Four minutes. I can, from the station we're at now, I can be anywhere in the general area in four minutes, but south on the four lane, I cannot. It's just too much travel time.
So our anticipation efforts actually hurt us on our class four?
Over the years, yes. Ten years ago was not an issue, but that's, you know, it's forcing me to exceed the four-minute response time in certain areas. Those things look, we'll have to address over a period of time.
Questions, counsel?
What is our average response time?
Average response time is four to six minutes depending on where we have to go. Most everywhere in corporate city limits, we get there in the required time. The areas south on the four lanes where we have issues.
And the flow?
And the flow, things like that we'll have to address. There's not so much water, so that's something that will take over a period of time to take larger water lines, more reservoirs. That's something that.
We built, we built three tanks on.
That's one thing. We don't, we don't have enough control over those kind of issues out of the way. To be able to work out some of that stuff.
We have better water pressure south than we do here.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Steve.
For the month of January, the city's fire department responded to a hundred and two, or sorry, a hundred and ten calls. Those were four structured fires outside the city limits. Two of those were our own, two were backups to the county structure fires in the mayor district. No grass, or nobody had a fire in or out. One grass fire inside the city and outside. Ten motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, two outside. Forty-six emergency medical responses in the corporate city limits, thirty outside. Eleven other calls in, six out until the end of the month. It was a hundred and ten calls, obviously, it was first month of the year. Fire inspection office looked at two sets of plans for construction and did nothing to set the team's actions.
Questions, counsel? One more thing on the ISO. I'm surprised that we got a fine for outside areas, knowing how large our area is.
Those are the areas that the county really helped us because the county responded with us through those areas, just like we responded with them through the fires that I just mentioned. So we were able to pick up points in those areas.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Get on with the business.